Good evening and welcome to our committee of whole agenda. This is March 24th at 5:00 PM. Can I get a mover and second or to open the meeting? Moved by Deputy Mayor Lang, seconded by Counselor Bouji, that we open the meeting at 5:02 PM. All those in favor? Carried. Is there any amendments to the agenda?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. No, there are no amendments.
Okay, thank you. So moved by Counselor Jaworski, seconded by Counselor McTinnell. Be it resolved that Council of the Township of South Langary approved the agenda as circulated. All those in favor? Carried. Are there any declarations of pecuniary interest? Seeing none, we'll get to presentations and delegations, asset management fleet discussion. Ms. McDonald. Ms. McDonald, a all.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and we thought that we would all come up to the front since we don't do this very often. And to be honest, these are the gentlemen who can answer any questions that council may have about the fleet. So you can look at them in the eye, they can look you back, they can answer any questions. We have Dylan Segay, our Director of Water and Wastewater on my right, James Levak, our Supervisor of Roads and Fleet, and Kyle McIntosh, our Technical Supervisor. And without any further ado, I want you to see if this works. So our agenda for the presentation part, there are four pieces to it, CVOR, inventory, our level of service, and our ad hoc policies. Pretty self-explanatory. And if at any point council has questions, just stop us. Hopefully, this can be fairly informal. At the end, any questions also feel free to ask. And there's like, this leads into some of the staff reports in tonight's council meeting. So an opportunity for members of council to get the information that they'd like in advance of that meeting to expedite, hopefully, there as well. And also to take advantage of our experts before they head out the door, if in fact they leave. So a reminder for everyone, CVOR is our Commercial Vehicle Operators Registration, and it applies to all of the bigger pieces of equipment in our fleet. So to maintain our CVOR, we undergo, or we, James? This is where we pass it right along.
Yeah, we have fourteen vehicles in the roads department that are near the CVOR license, one in parks. And then the fire fleet is in there as well, but they're exempt from some of the CVOR requirements.
It's anything with the yellow sticker on it. So this year in May, we're undertaking a CVOR audit for the entire township. So we're auditing our practices against requirements that MTO has for CVOR vehicles. And we'll see how we stack up. So that's not just for infrastructure services, that applies to anything in our CVOR rated fleet. So keep that in mind as we go through. Some of our vehicles are held to a bit higher standard in terms of the paperwork that we keep behind them on the operations side. So a light duty pickup would not apply, but our one tons certainly are tandems. And that's it, eh? Yep, cool. Council has been asking for a while to have a comprehensive and holistic view of our fleet inventory. So we have pulled together, I believe that if there is anything missing, it's not administration's intent to hide anything. It's just we've missed it along the way, and we did not include our trailers and some of our small equipment like that. So this is really the big stuff. We have our Fire Chief Robertson over in the panel. So if there's any questions about our fire fleet, we can direct them over to him. Or I don't know, Dave, did you have anything to say particularly about your fleet? He says no. So just questions. It's really neat to see our fleet up like this. There's a pumper, a tanker, and a rescue at each station. We have five stations. These are our pumbers and our tankers. Our rescues are on this next slide. And I believe the fire services have moved towards pickups for some of their rescues. I am going to pause here because this is kind of the end of the fire fleet bit. So if there's any questions for Mr. or Fire Chief Robertson.
Are there any questions of the Fire Chief at present? Or not Fire, Fire Fleet, not Chief, or both, I guess? Nope. Okay, we'll move on to the next.
Excellent. So next we get into our CVOR vehicles. So again, these are our heavy duty vehicles. We have in our fleet eleven tandems. So they are the plow trucks that plow our roads. You can see up here, we've tried to give an understanding of what they're used for in the winter months. So if they're hard top or loose top, which is everything, and we do have a spare truck. I want to point out number fifteen. It's a loose top plus a water truck. So it gets a bit more use than the other ones. So whenever we look at number of kilometers put on a vehicle, anything that runs full seasons obviously puts on more kilometers. The other pieces of equipment on our fleet are primarily winter vehicles. So we put on fifteen, twelve? Twelve thousand kilometers on average for our tandems that run winter seasons only. We do maintain a spare. Right now, our spare is number thirteen. It was the one that was, it's a whole thing. I have a staff report asking a question of council later, and I'll kind of just explain it right now. So it's between number eleven or twenty two thousand eight Ford and then number thirteen or two thousand four Sterling or International. So right now, the older vehicles with the thirteen has been disposed of. It sits in the yard. When we have a breakdown, we throw it back into service. It is in better shape than number eleven. So number eleven is still considered an active service. But when we go to purchase our next piece of equipment, we'd like to maintain thirteen as our spare and completely dispose of eleven. Reasons being our Sterling is hard to find parts. It's not a common vehicle in our area where the international, everyone has them. So it's a bit easier. And also, the Ford seems to break down more often. We recently, yeah, we recently lent it out to one of our neighboring municipalities who didn't have a spare and who were in need, and they brought it back and basically said, very politely said, this should not be on the road. So it's there, but in terms of maintaining it as the spare when we go around, we'd prefer to keep number thirteen. So that's a paperwork ask of council. I'd also like to note that three, well, four of these vehicles have a back blade on it. I'm just going to have Mr. Levak explain what a back blade does for a township.
So the rear scraper, we use a lot for the freezing rain events. Then we also use it in the springtime when we're having a hard time with the graders keeping up with the granular with potholes. So it is a good asset that way. It helps us out a lot for trying to get, keep the level of service up. But yeah, it is a very key asset when it comes to freezing rain. For our response, time for that.
So our units with back blades are ten, thirteen, sixteen, and twenty-three. You can see that thirteen is our, seemed to be spare, or no, it is our spare. And so it was replaced by twenty sixteen. So we put a back blade on sixteen when we replaced it. However, we have roughly equal amount number of, or percentage of gravel roads, east and west of thirty-four. So we're hoping that when we do our next purchase, we will bring, we'll be able to maintain four back blades in our township. So that we have two on the east, two on the west. We pulled the numbers. We have seventy-eight kilometers of gravel on the west of thirty-four and sixty-seven kilometers of gravel on the east. And what impacts the west impacts the east. So the cost, I believe, for that back blade was twenty to thirty thousand dollars for the equipment. And that would be something we'd be looking for adding when the time comes, just as kind of a heads up to council. So right now, we run with three. We have four because it's on our spare, but we're hoping to have four back blades in our full-time fleet. The next slide is just, it's an older version of our plow routes, and it explains why we have ten plows. We have ten plows because we have ten snowplow routes. Pretty straightforward. So those are the routes. We can't go below ten plows unless we change the routes. If we go over ten plows, then we would either have a very good spare, or we would need to, like, we'd be increasing the levels of service. So always up for council's discussion, but for council and the public, ten routes, ten plows. Next, we get into our owned roads equipment. So this is what we own ourselves. We have a trackless which does our sidewalk operations. It is coming due for replacement. We struggled this year keeping it going. Mr. Levak, what was the main issue? It was at the back somewhere.
Yeah, the rear end differential broke down on us. I think we were down for four days with that breakdown, but it was the most costly breakdown we faced this winter with it.
So based on its age and its usage like that, we'll be coming up, I think it's next year or the year after for replacement. We have our new twenty twenty-three CAT, our Baco. We use it to dig. It's used quite often. We have our new loader, the two thousand eleven John Deere. We have our five-year lease, the John Deere tractor that council approved a few years ago, and we use that for mowing in the summer, so our roadside mowing, and for plowing the village of Martin Town in the winter and a few other small places. So that's the usage of that guy. Our ninety-six CAT is at the landfill at Paxton, does stuff for us there. It was refurbished. It's twenty seventeen or twenty eighteen. It was refurbished when we purchased it. So it's not actually a nineteen ninety-six. It's a bit newer in terms of its parts and components. We have our twenty-ten CAT grader recently refurbished. So again, like, it's newer than its date may show. And that was refurbished last year. We have our twenty-seventeen John Deere grader. That's our new guy. Seems to be working pretty well. We're happy with it. Yeah, we're happy with it. And then our O-two CAT Baco, or yeah, Baco that we've held on to, and we'll dispose of it whenever it ceases to work or the maintenance costs become too great. So the CAT, the two thousand and two CAT was replaced by the newer CAT. We moved it up to the North Lancaster shop, and it kind of putters around and loads salt in the winter. So we found a use for it. We found that when we dispose of pieces of equipment that are really old, we're not getting great money for them, like five thousand to ten thousand dollars. So to keep it around and just kind of keep things moving along in our operations and not heavy use seems to be a good use for it, on our end anyways, operationally. So that is our owned fleet equipment. So what we have long, long term, owned and leased, I suppose. Maybe I'll just pause here. If there's anything on us, the stuff we own.
Are there any questions of the larger items at present? Counselor Jaworski?
Thank you. Through you, Mayor McDonald. Thank you very much. So far, I just wanted to clarify, which one was it that had the rear differential that went kaput?
So it's the, yeah, the top left machine.
So just in case, that was the sidewalk one, right? Just for the watching public. I'll go to Counselor McTinnell, I think I saw Deputy Mayor Lang, and then Counselor Bouji.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Thanks. And I'm glad to have all of you here. It's much easier to answer these questions when we're, we've got, there's no excuse for no answer, I guess. Just a few questions, I guess. I know, I'd always heard number eleven was, yes, a headache, and it was going to be, it was always consistently difficult to find parts for. Is there an appetite to keep two spares? Because as you said earlier, we do tend to gate five cents on the dollar for anything that we do dispose of. I don't know if there's a need for it, just as we've got a few older trucks, but I know they're, they're still doing fine. But the twenty-twelve doesn't sound that old, but it is over twelve, thirteen years old now. So just something that I, something I was thinking of, if it's worth just keeping it around, or if it would be more of a burden to have it in the shop as a spare backup. And for myself, I keep coming back to, do we need another truck and another driver and another route? I know we say ten seems like a lot, but it, when it comes to the general public, and I know from my experiences of doing snow removal, it's never fast enough. But could we be faster? And what would be the, would it be significant enough to put another plow truck on the road? Would we see a major increased level in service for dollars to time, I guess, at the end of the day?
That's a question I had thought to ask, too. I'm sure a few of us would. So do you have, that would be the eleventh truck, essentially. Would it, I think we have frequent, but I wouldn't say overwhelming complaints, but they are, they are frequent. And I don't know if we're talking about, like, the nub roads might not get better service, and I don't know if that's where your calls come from, but those are questions to ask.
Some people don't understand either, that, you know, if a road is in rougher shape and it's gotten uneven surface, a straight blade isn't going to clean it as, it's not going to look like it was cleaned as well. But I mean, so I won't put it on that our, you know, our drivers aren't getting there quick enough. But it's, if we're here to have this conversation, and now's the time. If staff feels if we put another driver on the road, are we going to see a significant increase in efficiencies? Or is there places, you know, in your routes where maybe inexperienced drivers doing a lot more running, you know, running or doing, they're maybe carrying a little more than the rest, that it would make sense in preparation for that person retiring that we're not stuck with, you know, three new drivers at one point in time where they're not, they're obviously not going to be as efficient because you never will be as good as the experienced guys. So just kind of a question that way. If in preparation for retirement or something, you see the need for one and adding another route and increasing the service in the short, medium term?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Big questions. I would put that back to council. What level of service do you want to see? We currently meet our minns. The routes are on paper balance for about a four-hour runtime, but it likely, like, in a heavy event, takes closer to seven to get through. If we added a plow route, we'd likely see, like, we would balance them out so that when they leave, they come back roughly about the same time. So every route would see efficiencies in that way. So they'd become six-hour routes in heavy snow and maybe like three and seven quarters in normal conditions. So that really would be, is that, like, we can put together a staff report kind of outlining what that would look like in the cost, and then council could decide if that was something that they desired.
So with that, would, oh, please go ahead.
I guess where I'm coming from, too, would be, and that's, I agree, I'm not looking for that answer this evening. It's not a cookie cutter answer for you to give. But it was more, you know, balancing. You might say, you know, add one, you're better to add two because of the hours, like, maybe it gets three passes in the shift for the drivers as opposed to, you know, adding one route won't get us really an extra, another pass in the shift. But something along those lines that maybe we could look at, that there's maybe, you know, it's, what we know from looking at the staff report for this evening, it's four twenty. So if it's, if it's eight forty for two trucks, should we be planning that now? Or is it, is it an opportunity in the future? Is it something we should be looking at to increase the level of service? Because we, I mean, we're meeting, we're meeting our minns, but there's nothing that says we can't go above and beyond. And I think, you know, we have some of the higher taxes in the three United Counties. We should have, we should see a hardline level of service. Because when snow flies, people always go, the only thing I get for my tax dollars is snow removal and garbage pickup, and they forget everything else. So it's a top priority for, I would say ninety percent of the taxpayers, snow removal and the roads. So just, it was something maybe maximizing it, or if there's a way to do better with more. Or I don't think you've got a council here that's looking to skip on roads and infrastructure, in my personal thought.
Those are fair points. So in that regard, as you're not expecting like a perfect answer right now, it would be kind of perhaps a staff report that shows like, would there be enough of a benefit for the cost? So cost benefit analysis, perhaps one, two, and then, I mean, we might as well see if there was like an ideal amount. So maybe run it at one and two, and if, say, four was like, this is where you're going to get the value, it might not be something we will, we'll say yes to. But we'd like to see what, like, don't put, don't put our arbitrary number because we're wondering one or two right now. But if there's a value that would actually like have a massive benefit, you know, like, say, go from four hours to three hours, a step change. And if that's three or four, maybe it comes back to us, and we say, well, that's a little much, but at least, but at least we would have that information. But maybe some values on what the benefit is for each additional truck, and then like a maximum, like a step up in level. I think we had Deputy Mayor Lang. Are you satisfied, Counselor McTinnell?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I am. I just, before we move on, I've got others, but I'll let the others go. I won't hog all the time.
Deputy Mayor Lang, and then Counselor Bouji. And I don't know if Counselor Jaworski wanted to get back in. Okay, then we'll go back to Sam after those three. So go ahead, Deputy Mayor Lang.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through you, and appreciate the meeting tonight and the updates as we're getting them. A couple of points on the two thousand and eight Ford, just reading the report later on in our regular council meeting, would be leery to keep it as a spare if, you know, parts are hard to get and it's this sort of thing, you know, do we really want that hassle? Maybe we'll have to wait till the next international goes, gets replaced, that you get your second spare if you want to. The piggybacking on Counselor McTinnell. So in a heavy snow event, if we're, if we're up to seven hours to do, then I don't know the maximum hours. I thought it was like thirteen. So we can't really get two full runs done in that time then likely. So, you know, that is something to consider, you know, like, if you're only going to do one in three quarters, then you got to decide which roads you leave off your second pass, you know, this sort of thing. Or which you leave off your first pass and pick up on the second one. I don't know exactly how they do it. But, so it is something to talk about whether we can get it where they could comfortably at least make two passes in their thirteen hours that they're allowed to drive. That was just a piggyback. My question was on the payloader. Just as, it's not too long ago that we decided to get it, and I understand that we're happy we have it. And, but I just wanted, maybe it's a good time to get an update, is how it's working out. We happy we have it. Sometimes you buy something, and you think to yourself after, how did we get by without having one? Is it that sort of thing, or it's just a little bit of a bonus, or it's a little better than a Baco or a tractor? Just kind of an update on what you feel of it, if you're happy with it.
Yes, and through you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, we're very pleased with it. It's worked out really well for us. It cuts down a lot on the loader time. Like, previously to having that loader, we had a, we would use the tractor. And that was sixteen buckets to fill the truck, and now you're two to three. So just for loading time, cuts down big. And then we have been using it to also load the salt shed, our storage facility. So there's another bonus to owning it. It does, before, we used to have to hire a loader to do it. So now we're saving costs there as well by doing it ourselves.
Counselor Bouji?
Thank you. And through you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. I mean, I'm a very visual learner. So to see all our trucks, all our vehicles numbered, like, this is, this is a great presentation. My comment was in regards to the snowplow and the ten routes, and I was kind of as to what Counselor McTinnell talked about. I mean, I guess typical past four hours, but in a heavy event, six-ish, would one make a difference enough? You might almost need two. I don't know. But I would like to kind of see some kind of cost analysis on that if it did make sense to add. Because it is definitely, the calls when it comes to the heavy snow events are coming to council for sure. And I mean, our crew does an awesome job, but if there's an opportunity to improve, I think it's definitely worth looking at that. And the back blades, you said roughly twenty thousand dollars, and you're looking at purchasing an additional one in the future. So we'd have four in the fleet, two for east and west. I think they're definitely an asset to have. I know we tried it, I think for the first time, like, probably ten years ago now. I think Yon had brought them in originally, and we had tried it. And, I mean, it's, it's great to have in the fleet, you know, ice rain events and even potholes. So if needed.
Thanks. All right. And how long does a back blade last typically? Just piggyback on that question or comment.
So we have been running them for the life of the truck. So we did get that one new unit just last fall. But the three that we have are approximately ten years old now. We have been maintaining them, and, but, yeah, they do break and can be costly to fix, but.
That's good for asset management planning, because when you buy one, you should start saving for the next one. Counselor Jaworski?
Thank you. Through you, Mayor McDonald. So I, first of all, I'm not going to repeat what my colleagues have said, but I do want to emphasize that I agree very strongly that I'd like to understand what would be required to have a step change in terms of the winter road coverage, how to maximize the number of, optimize the number of passes that could be done within a shift at that next service level point. So again, strongly, strongly agree with that. Don't want to repeat everything that's been said. However, one thing I wanted to add, and again, I'm not suggesting this is in place of these other ideas. And certainly, if it's a very expensive idea, feel free to disregard it entirely. But one thing I find in terms of the complaints that I've received in terms of weather events, often are folks who think the plow has not gone by, but it has gone by. Or it's the, where is the plow when, and in some cases, it's, you know, there was an issue and the plow broke down. And so it didn't kind of come on its usual rhythm. And so I wonder if there's a way, and I feel like there would be a lot of value in folks having more clarity, like, the public having more clarity on that. So I know at one point, the counties had, like, G had like GPS on their plows that you could actually see on the website and kind of see where they were going. So I've just, again, I feel like that level of information would be, I think would be helpful to the public, and it would help them better understand the level of service that they are getting and not make assumptions that are not always correct. So I just wanted to throw that in there if that's ever something that could potentially help with, with the, at least the perception of the level of service we provide.
I believe internally, you, you may have that software. Is there like a, would that one have a public facing side that, that is shared, or is it something the other municipalities just to kind of follow on that question? Have you seen other municipalities use it? And if there are any why or why nots?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I can cover the more comprehensive answer, but it's mixed out in the world. Some places put it publicly, but in terms of protecting our staff, sometimes I worry about giving their exact location if someone's displeased with the service they've received. We, we have had incidents of members of the public, like harassing our staff. And if they, can be very blunt, like, they knew that a female driver was out there at 3:00 AM or wherever, and they knew exactly where she was because they knew what route she was on, that would be a concern for me. Not, not saying that the males are not also incredibly important, but, yeah, in terms of the, the more, not using that word. Anyhow, that, that would be a concern as, as a, as a manager of, of people. But definitely, like, it's, it's mixed out there.
No, and that's a very, I mean, certainly a valid point. So I'm wondering if maybe some of the municipalities that do do it, maybe they have like a time lag on when that information like is, like becomes posted. I don't know. Maybe that's one way of assuaging those very valid concerns.
Councilor McDonnell?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I'll just piggyback on Councilor Jaworski. As, I've had discussions with the other municipalities that have done it in the past, and after one or two seasons do tend to pull it off. Some people don't realize that our staff are, are human as well and have human functions they have to take care of. And when they see the snowplows sitting at Tim Hortons in Lancaster for five minutes, they just assume he's sitting there having a coffee and killing it in the afternoon when they might have to go to the washroom. They don't just stop and pull over and go off the back of the blade. So I know that, that's generally, I've heard a lot of municipalities that will put it forward facing and then pull it right down just based on it causes more problems, and administratively, they tend to get a lot more calls. I would, I would propose that maybe council and other staff maybe have access, that it doesn't have to go through administration, and it's not the roads manager that's getting the calls from the public and from us going, where's the snowplow, when's he coming? Or when there is, when there is a legitimate request based on whether it's, I don't know, you're waiting for, I'm coming from the dairy industry going, okay, my milk truck's going to have to get here at some point. Maybe nice to be able to just send them a message and say, hey, it's coming, or the, the snowplow is on, it's going to be by in an hour, or something like that, or whatever the case may be. That would be my one caveat there. The only, the only other questions I had had was, is we're looking at a trackless replacement in one to two years. Correct me if I'm wrong, but I think they're in the quarter million dollar range for the trackless with equipment. Something maybe we could look at in the future be, or in, in advance of that is, should we be exploring five-year contracts for our sidewalks? Given, given, say, a five-year contract, a contractor could then justify maybe buying the equipment to do it themselves, or have the, I guess the stability to buy the equipment to do it, and then cut down on, on our needs for, for staffing, or alleviate maybe some of our, our wait times in general. They'd all be done at once, they'd be done multiple times, and we could, to my knowledge now, I think the trackless driver is also doing Martin Town, so it would, it would, it would also increase our level of service in the village there. So maybe something to look at. Again, there's no way you can give me an answer tonight unless it's, no, we don't want to do that. But that, and the only other piece of equipment I looked at was the payloader that, is it worth having a harness on it, or a quick attach for a, a V-blade or something in, in looking back on these large storms we had, where I know a lot of municipalities had trouble opening roads even. So be opening them up or helping us a bit, that when it's not on operations, it, it could go out and maybe do a bit of plowing itself. I don't know if you see a benefit there. They do a lot of road use with it in, in Quebec. I know our neighboring municipality there, they've got two plows and a payloader, and whenever things get, get drifting, they can send out the payloader and have three going. There is much smaller municipality that way. But something that might be of interest, or if it's a viable option for, for us in the, at this point.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. We do have our, our graders hooked up with, with plows, and that's the function that we use them for. So whenever we can't get through, we'll send a grader out and punch, punch through and open up for our, for our, for our plows. We can look into also the payloader, but right now, like, that, we're happy, I believe, with how the graders work. Yeah.
Like I say, I didn't know if it was something that might be of interest, and I mean, if we're having a fleet discussion now, it's the time, but just if, I didn't know if you saw a need or not for it. So at this point, I just wanted to throw it out there.
All right. Thank you. Are there any further questions? I think the big one here would be the plow, like, looking at that next level of service, or what one, one plus is, and perhaps that cost benefit analysis. And then there was a question on the, on the surplus one being forward, like, is it, is it worthwhile having, having that one? Is it, seems to be difficult to us. So I guess info report in the future on those items. And I, have I missed one? I think those were the two big ones. Okay. So, so an info report or, or staff report if it gets there, but it's always nice sometimes to invest a little bit of work in an info report and see if you're on, on track. And that way, we don't go down a, a long road that we're going to say no to or yes to. Get a good idea there. So then moving on, it looks like we're into parks equipment?
Yep. Excellent. So we have Ms., uh-oh, Ms. Harbers, yes, here, to answer any questions. But this is our, our parks equipment. We have our Kubota, the 2021 Kubota that we use on our, on the peanut line, the 2019 Kubota tractor that's used for general parks maintenance. And actually, I was talking to Ms. Harbers earlier today, and she enlightened me as to the many functions of that piece of equipment. And it's, it's really well used. We have two Zambonis, again, one spare, same idea as with the plow trucks. We don't get a lot of value when we dispose of them, so we keep them hanging around so that operations can continue for the public should our, our current Zamboni go down. And we have a older Kubota that we believe was replaced, like, the 2019 replaced the 1997 one. So 1997 one is primarily used at our roads garage to mow grass. But again, it's just something that we've kept around for, for small items that we, we need to do. So if there's any questions about our, our parks equipment that we own, Ms. Harbers is available.
Any questions of the parks equipment at present? All right. We'll move on to the next fleet inventory, equipment.
Oops. This slide is showing what we rent every year. So it's missing a heading, but this is our equipment that we rent annually. So not leasing, these are rentals. So we rent one tractor every summer to complement our roadside mowing. So we run two tractors roadside mowing every summer for four to six months, depending on what the season is. And in 2024, we spent $26,000 on that rental. We rent an extra grader during our granular, granular overlay so that we can run our two maintenance graders, plus have one available for that overlay. Two months of that is about $24,000. We rent, we'll, we rent excavators of various natures for a number of things each year. Up here, we've got our, we rent some form of excavator for ditching and culvert replacement. In 2024, that was approximately $23,000. That work is as needed, so it's not something that we keep lying around. We, we call in, we schedule a dig, or we schedule culvert replacement, and it shows up when we need it. So there's a bit of operationally, operational challenges there. Like, if weather doesn't cooperate and suddenly we can't go out, we have to reschedule our work. We have also been undertaking a right-of-way reclamation project over the past few years. Bumpy start, but it's been well received ever since we stopped using the attachment that everybody didn't like. Last year, I think in my staff report, I said we had it for three months. I double-checked with Mr. Lavak, and we had issues getting it. So we spent $26,000 in hours over a five-week period, so it wasn't the three months that I thought. We have excellent results with, with that piece of equipment. I'm going to flip the page in a second. Missing from this is we do rent on an hourly basis another tract excavator at the landfill to, to help us out. A wheeled excavator would not be appropriate if that question comes up, not appropriate at the landfill in the shoulder seasons, we need those trucks. But a, a wheeled excavator is, is excellent, we found, for our roadside work. So in terms of our roadside, our right-of-way reclamation results, this is one of my favorite pictures on my phone. This is La Pierre Road, and it, it just looks amazing in this photo. So this is what we've been able to achieve with having a wheeled excavator in our mulcher?
Yes.
Our mulcher attachment. You may not know that this is an amazing picture until you see the sneaky one that I snuck in afterwards. This is La Pierre before and after. So that's 2023 versus 2024 after we've gone through, and you can just see the change in our right-of-way. We've opened it up, we've taken away the trees that are encroaching on our, on the road space. It's easier to maintain. With the mulcher, you can see that we're dropping the, like, the mulch down. So that prevents new growth from coming up. So we are like much better than the, what was the other thing called? Yeah, I mean, the bush hog thing that just put wood chips or like wood debris flying everywhere chunks. It was awful. We apologize. We wanted to try, and we learned. So one of the asks that we have coming up is that we would like to, to bring a wheeled excavator into, into our fleet, since we have spent approximately $50,000 in getting five weeks plus ad hoc usage of an excavator. If we had an excavator year round, we could, I know everybody says we can do more things, but our response time to small jobs would be greatly increased. We'd really like to keep going with this right-of-way reclamation project. We try not to do it during birdnesting season. In my staff report, I note that in our area, that's mid-April until the end of August. So our, our timeframes for doing this work is really in the fall, winter and spring months, ground and like the smushiness of the ground pending. One of the reasons that we are recommending a lease administratively is that since we are doing it during the winter, there's a lot of road salts, and we're going to beat this piece of equipment up pretty badly. It's possibly not something that we want to have at the end. And after five years, we may be out of roads to reclaim. Like, we're making great progress. So if council's not interested in committing to a piece of equipment in the long term, then this lease would be an excellent way to go. Also, it's already included in our operations budget by virtue of, we're already spending $50,000 renting, and we have included rental costs to get that six months' worth of work done. So this is something that I'm pretty passionate about. It is a very pretty picture. I'm going to go back one, just so I can see. Like, isn't that beautiful? Like, it's just so nice. And I'm sure once we get, this was right after we'd gone through, and you can see that we're in the middle of grading the road, like the graders down a bit. So that's not a beautifully graded road with the humps on the edges, but it was maybe three hours, three hours later. But it is, you know, just a really efficient piece of equipment to get our, our right-of-way back up and running, which improves drainage, it improves sightlines. It just, it, it keeps our roads functioning better, and hopefully in the long run, will reduce our maintenance costs. So it's a, a bump for a bunch of years, followed by, followed by perhaps a lessening, or we'll go and do more things. So I think I'll pause here again, because we go into heavy pickups next, and this is kind of the, what we rent. I'm going to go back. What we rent annually for equipment.
Okay. Councilor McDonnell?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. And I guess just on the right-of-way reclamation has been, yeah, it's been bumpy, but I think that's, that's a good example of where the right piece of equipment in the right place with efficient use, I think it's, it's excellent. And as far as aesthetically, it's very nice, but also for ourselves, and I know, speaking for myself, and I'm sure Deputy Mayor Lang would agree, for safety wise, for large-ag equipment running down the road, you're always conscious that you're not, one, scratching the side of a combine or catching, you know, ripping something like a $5,000 antenna off for a GPS, but also on, on sprayers and, and other large pieces of equipment, it, it can cost a lot of money, and a nozzle body isn't cheap for a sprayer these days. So ripping five of them off can be a, a very bad day for somebody when they're trying to not hit a car and run down the road, and the branches are in so far. So I, I think it's excellent. I think it looks very good, so long as, you know, the operator's conscious, and they're, they're, they're very careful with what they're doing, and they use good common sense that, you know, we don't want to mulch somebody's nice maple trees they planted 30 feet or 40 feet off the road just yet, when they're eight foot tall. But, you know, it's, it, for the most part, our, our operators have been excellent that way. So very happy to see that, and I'm excited for that, to see the outcomes of that, and what else we can do as far as culvert fixes, et cetera. The only other question I had, again, level of service. Last year, grass was, grew exceptionally well. We had record-high rain, rain levels. Are we getting enough done in a year, or do, should we be doing more? I know people, when they see it, we've, we've gone, I think we, maybe the operators increased their level of service, that they were doing a, a very nice job of it and going as far as they could, and, and trying, trying not to just do the, the one-pass special, but actually go, you know, above and beyond, I think, in a lot of cases. And it looked really well and was very well received. I got a lot of compliments last year on our roadside ditching and mowing. Is two going to cut it, or should we be at three? Is, again, are the guys that are on it doing outrageous hours, or do we want to have a, do we want to have that commitment? As far as renting a tractor, isn't, isn't that hard with the amount of local operations that do that? Or, or again, whether it's a contractor question?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Another really big question that will need a follow-up report. I can just, off the top of my head, say that our current level of service policy for our right-of-way says that we'll do one pushback pass and then, or one daylighting pass followed by the full pushback. So that would require revision if council would like us to do maybe like three passes a year. That goes hand in hand with our roadside spraying program. Like, if we're not happy with how we're attacking our invasive species through our spraying program, then we could scale back on that and push for more increased mechanical means, which would be more effective. But again, we'll come back with an info report, and that would really be a question for council.
And for those eight-foot maples that got cut, just remember your ALIS program can replace them, or not ALIS, but RRCA has seedlings to, to replace anything we, we cut if we do go above and beyond. I don't, I hadn't heard that one, but, Deputy Mayor Lang, and then Councilor Jaworski?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through you. Question on the wheeled excavator. Would you be looking to lease, like, what equipment to go with it? I mean, obviously, usually a regular digging bucket comes with it, but the jobs we do could likely use a ditching bucket, I would think. And this chipper, would you be looking at buying a chipper, possibly leasing the chipper to go with it? Just kind of wondering what your thoughts are, if, if we were to go ahead, move ahead with this, what you would get with it. The chippers, I'm, I don't know what they cost. I bought one for a Skidster, which was a lot smaller than one of these, and it was like 25 grand back in, I don't know, six years ago or so. So they're likely, I don't know what they are, but they're going to be expensive.
Yes, through you, Mr. Mayor. So we'd be looking at leasing everything. So it would be including a tooth bucket for digging, ditching bucket, and then the mulcher would be also on the lease. Just outright purchase, I'm just looking on paperwork here, but 40,000 to 60,000 to purchase ahead for that machine, a particular sized machine.
Yeah, that makes sense to me for, for price-wise. And I don't know if this is the, like, we have a staff report coming up later, maybe that's more the time to talk about it. But I would like to, at some point, have a bit of a conversation about leasing or buying, you know, just, I don't know, Mr. Mayor, if you, when you think that should happen?
I think that would be fine right now, because I think the staff report deals with what will suggest leasing. And, and I always think council meetings are, are decision meetings, and this is a very heavily discussion meeting. So I think it's perfect right now to, to have that discussion. So, so does anybody have any thoughts on that latter staff report, but specifically to this vehicle, whether leasing or purchasing is, is what we want? I believe Deputy Mayor Lang probably had some thoughts in favor of purchasing, but if you want to go on that and see what others think?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I'll go ahead, and I did thank Mr. and Ms. McDonald for speaking with me this afternoon. Typically, I, I know there's times that leasing works out for you, depending on, on your situation, but leasing is a complete write-off as far as taxes, but township isn't going to be paying a lot of income tax. So I just want to kind of figure, and I know the, the thought process there is that this is going to be out, you know, during the winter a bit as well, depending on, I mean, it's hard to do much road reclaiming if the snowbanks are four feet deep. But, but there are times in the winter where there's not much of anything, you know, there are early winter and late winter as well, so work could be done. So there's going to be some salt damage. So there's going to be some salt damage, but I'm looking at most of our other equipment and it does get beat up and then we end up keeping it around as a spare or as, you know, because we don't get a lot for it anyway. So my thought is when you lease, somebody is making interest on that. They're not leasing it to you for, for nothing. If you're using their money, they're, they're making interest on it somewhere. So I think if we can afford to buy, usually buying is better, but I just want to see what everybody else is thinking, where they'd like to go with this. And, and these machines are meant to, to work. They're heavy, they're not like the tin on a truck where it gets rusty and it rusts right through. I mean, you can paint them and it's, you know, it's gonna be quarter-inch, half-inch steel likely. So I'm wondering what everybody else's thoughts are. That's kind of what, what I was leaning toward. And I don't know if Miss McDonald maybe was able to pull any numbers together, kind of give us an idea whether there was a, a big difference or not.
We're going to Councilor McDonnell. Did you get those numbers? Just so we can, if we're discussing them, might as well have some numbers in front of us.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. The purchase price for one of these would be between 500,000 and 540 from our last quotes. And it is between, for the lease annually, 70 to 90 from our previous quotes with a residual of 160. Sorry, that, this includes all the attachments.
Okay. And just for, for my sake, because I probably lease less vehicles than many people. When you say residual on the lease, so we'd have it for, the buyout in case we wanted to purchase it after it's done. Thank you. I will go Councilor McDonnell and Councilor Bujie.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I'm, I'm not opposed to looking at a purchase either. I agree with the deputy mayor. There's, there's a place for leasing and it's generally in, you know, an excavation business or a farm operation where you can write it off 100% and then you can buy it out. They, they even make a lease for it. I think the dealers call it the farm special where you pay a dollar for it in the end. But I, I'd be interested in looking at those numbers as well, see what would be more cost-effective. Now, your purchase price of five to 540, was that including or excluding equipment? Because there's probably about $100,000 in attachments there between buckets. If you're 60 to 60,000 for the head, plus, well, the buckets wouldn't be that much, but in the 80 to 90,000 range?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. We're cer- we're certain?
Yeah.
We're certain that that includes attachments.
But, okay.
That's good depth of information and good clarification question. Councilor Bujie?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for bringing this up, Martin. And I typically am in favor of buying if, I mean, if there is a need. I know we leased at first to kind of see and, but if we can use it year-round for different operations, like, just doing the math quick, if we're leasing 90,000 per year to buy with 540, I mean, that's six years and, and we own it. So to me, and then we have it down the road for future work. So to me, five-year lease? Yeah, so, but, yeah, to me, I mean, that makes sense, purchasing. But I definitely like to look at that option and we can look at numbers a little more closely, but that would be my choice.
Okay. So then it seems like the, the will of council, we, we might make a friendly amendment to that staff report this evening to, to do it. And we might, I'll ask one member of council to just summarize this in case somebody watches our, our, just our meeting, but without this committee, the whole, just so some of the thought goes to it. Or we'll just ask, actually, Miss McDonald, you to provide those numbers and then we'll have a slight debate there. Okay. Any further items on, on the big list? Okay, so I believe it's heavy-duty pickups at present?
Sure is. So we, the township currently has a surprisingly small number of, of heavy pickups in our fleet. I mean, I, I deal with the fleet all the time. I have my fleet list, but to see them as pictures, I was surprised to see that we really only have two one-tons available across all departments. We do have a number five. It was replaced a while back, but we held on to it as seems to be the theme. But it, it really has been replaced and it, it's the one that is challenging to drive because it's old and, does it break down a lot? It's the one that's always sitting whenever we need one tons. So we have our three-quarter ton, the lead hand and Rhodes uses that. It is not a one-ton, but it's excellent for a lead hand and for what it's used as. In our active fleet, we have number four, number 61. Number 61, Rhodes and Parks share. So it's labeled as Parks, but we do borrow it frequently. I'm going to flip to the next slide. A while ago, we disposed of a five-ton that we used in the village during the winter to plow. During the summer, that five-ton, we were able to use it during, like, for summer operations in lieu of a one-ton. So it had the bed at the back. We replaced that five-ton with this beautiful single axle, which is excellent for winter operations in the village, but it is not so useful in the summer. So we ended up with an excellent winter operations. It does everything it needs to do, but in terms of ongoing summer operations, there's a, a gap there. So if I go back a slide, we used to have like three, one, two, three. We had three one-tons and a five-ton in our fleet. And now we have a three-quarter and two one-tons and a single axle. So one of our staff reports is looking, and it was included in the budget and is kind of what precipitated this whole conversation was in our, in our budget, we included a new one-ton to be shared between Rhodes and Water. It would allow that number 61 to stay with Parks a bit longer since Rhodes would have this one-ton available when the valve trailer wasn't using it. We had previously, last summer rented a three-quarter ton to tow, to tow the, the valve trailer. And that comes to the CVOR, like, if you need to tow, you have to have a certain power of a vehicle to do it. So the half-ton's won't, won't cut it. So that, that is an ask towards council, is, is it okay? Not as okay, but would you be, except another one-ton in our fleet? I'm going to be quite honest, I believe we should have four one-tons available to the township at all time. They're used, they're not always used, but when they're used, you need them a lot. So when you go cold hatching, you need a lot of one-tons because you're moving a lot of material around and you're trying to get to as many places as possible with Parks. They also require a one-ton frequently during the year and Water about six months of the year now with the valve trailer. So right now, asking for an increase in, in the fleet, a one-ton shared between Rhodes and Water in their budgets, but then also on these spreadsheets proposing that whenever we dispose of our quarter-ton Colorado, that we look to replace it in a few years with a one-ton to get us up to four. So that's not, the Colorado replacement isn't, is not an ask right now. It's just kind of our thoughts and what, what's coming. But on our staff report tonight, it would be that request to, to get us up to three one-tons in active use. I'll pause here again.
All right. Are there any questions, comments on that one? I believe this, as Miss McDonald mentioned, is what precipitated and I think Councilor McDonnell, you, this was the one that brought up a budget specifically. So please proceed.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, in regards to, I, I was, I shouldn't say I was surprised. I was, I always, I always thought we had more of the one-tons, but I did remember that the, the five-ton truck that we had and, and remember we took that out of service and there was a replacement with the three-quarter ton. We didn't, but I think the three-quarter ton was kind of replacing that, not the supervisor, but what was it? The monitoring truck? We had, we had a 1,500 that had a plow on the front and no salter used to run around, did we? Or maybe it's an older, maybe an older 2,500 we had that ran around with a, it was getting pretty tough. It was maybe five years ago or four years ago.
Yeah, so through you, Mr. Mayor. It was a, it was a half-ton with a plow on the front. That was the patrol truck.
Yeah, patrol truck, that's it.
Yeah, we just found that the half-ton wasn't adequate enough to be running a plow. So that's when we stepped up to the three-quarter ton.
Yeah. And we, I think we kind of at that point, kind of, at the same time, got rid of the five-ton and it, it kind of made a gap. But the unit five, I, I see that one out, I want to say often enough, or am I wrong? I think it's still fairly, like, it's marked as spare, but I think it's not really a spare in the sense that it's, it's, it's out there pretty well, fully deployed.
Yeah, so for this time of the year, it's out quite often just because we're trying to keep up with the pothole season. So, yeah, we try to use the newer vehicles primarily, but when it comes, like I said, to this time of the year, it's all hands on deck and all vehicles we can afford to have out.
Perfect. So I guess, yeah, I'm looking at it as the one where you're looking to, looking to add one, but I guess in, in essence, make five an actual spare as opposed to kind of replacing five and keeping it as a spare is, I guess, the way I would frame it. Because I wouldn't, I wouldn't say we necessarily just have two right now. I, I see the three of them out quite, quite often. So I would say we're running three and if there's a need to, to have another one there, I guess that's a conversation we should have. But, yeah, it, it, I guess I'm just kind of highlighting that in essence. But we, we say we're running two, but we're, we're running our, our spare just trying to keep up, so.
Okay, and as this one will be coming on our council meeting later, if there's, if there's further details, now would be the time to, to ask them. So, or whenever it comes time to council, we'll just make an opinion at that time. Okay. No further questions on, on these particular ones and thank you, Councilor McDonnell. I think we're on to light-duty pickups now.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, I see the fleet list all the time. I was surprised that we have fewer light-duty pickups than we do tandems. And when you look at their distribution throughout the, the township, I was surprised at how few Rhodes had, to be quite honest. Because I just, for some reason, thought we had more. I know we have the, the one-tons and they serve a purpose, but this is our pickup fleet. So we have a, four, foreign roads. We have one with planning, building and bylaw. Two with Parks and three with Water. Right now, I'm going to pass it on to Mr. Segay since he had a, a future wish.
Thank you, Mr. and Miss McDonald and through you, Mr. Mayor. So this evening, I, I guess I'd just like to highlight a couple of things on the Water side. And we, I'm sure you have the spreadsheet on a future slide, but you'll see that there's potential to add a unit 86 in the future for the, the Water Division. Currently, we have number 80, 84 and 82. I should have said 82 first, but just going by the pictures up there, two of them are 2018s that were currently, well, that were rentals at previous time until council had decided to buy them back in 2021, 2022. So those assets are now around seven years old. One has a little bit higher kilometers, but I guess the, the main point here is now that they're starting to get older, the two blue ones, we are seeing more, more maintenance on them slowly as time goes on and we are down, down a truck. So currently, we're four full-time staff at the Water Division. During the summer, we, we bump up to also having a summer student that does a lot of running around for us. But having the, the three trucks in general, it, you know, it's, it's a good base, but a fourth vehicle would definitely be helpful. None of our staff on the Water Division work in pairs. We're always alone, no matter what site we're going to. And that's just because of the broad area we're servicing, all the way to Green Valley. We do every single well that the township owns, like a community center. So we do a lot of running around on the outskirts of town as well as Glen Walter, Lancaster, Redwood and Green Valley, all having, you know, fairly high demands in their own way to stay on top of our, our systems. So we, we do spend a lot of time sharing vehicles, mainly unit 80. It's more or less for the Glen Walter individual operator, summer student and myself. So we tend to run into situations where we're, we're always playing the, the timing game. When can you take the truck? When can you have it back for the next person to take it? So that's where part of the reasoning for looking forward at unit 86 in the future. But not only that, we, with the two blue trucks getting older in age, obviously we want to keep them a little longer. We are seeing more maintenance on them and every time we have a maintenance situation, we drop down to two trucks. And two trucks with four full-time staff trying to get to different sites can be quite difficult. But thankfully, we have both Rhodes Division and Parks Division that can hopefully, well, when we do reach out to them to borrow, they are more than happy to help us when they can. Not always the, the perfect scenario, but we've been lucky that we have been able to borrow from both of those divisions.
So not, not our request for this evening, but you will see when we get to like the actual fleet listing that we're proposing a, a fourth half-ton for Water in 2020, next year, 2026. I can see that we're getting close, we're actually over time. So I'm just gonna blow through to the next one because our rentals kind of tie into the light duty.
Our council meeting starts at 6:30, so there's, there is.
There's, I assume you want to eat?
Oh, yeah, but it's, yeah, it's fine. We can always, we can start five minutes late in that regard. So are there any questions of the, on that pickup fleet at present? Councilor McDonnell?
So Waters asking for a fifth truck because you've got a truck for most of the year and the one-ton that's proposed tonight at this point?
So through you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, but I did leave out that employee because the employee that would be using that truck is, yes, part-time for the Water Division, but that truck would only be part-time for us. It's, it's more of a, it's definitely a shared employee and a, a shared truck for, for the linear infrastructure side.
So the Wat- the Water, or the, the valve truck is operated by a shared employee between Rhodes and, okay.
Yeah, so through you, Mr. Mayor. Once, once the employee comes over from the Rhodes Division, he takes the one-ton with him. Whenever he goes back in the fall for his winter operations, he will take the, the one-ton back with him as well. So it will follow the employee.
Okay, and I'll, I guess on this vein, if, just based in a holistic view as we look at and ask for that, what is the need for a pickup truck?
It would be to, the need for the pickup truck is more of a, down the line as, as, you know, unit 80 will then become an operator truck. And following down the line, every time we're upgrading a vehicle, we're, we're pretty much handing down the next truck into, back into the fleet of more of an operator role or in more into a maintenance role. So it'd be light use for the first couple of years, keeping the truck in, you know, tip-top shape and then it would be transferred. So there, there would always be a progression of, you know, the newer truck up front and then we slowly work our way back. Throwing another type of vehicle in there would just, it would just mean that we're replacing that vehicle. We wouldn't have that same, we wouldn't have that same transfer of trucks through the departments as we go on. And it's just overall, a truck can be used in every scenario where certain vehicles are going to be limited to what they can do.
Okay. Thank you. Again, not a, it's not a decision for tonight, it's a decision for November. So something to think about while we're having this discussion.
And if I may, may speak as committee, the whole little more liberally would be, I have sometimes those thoughts too in that, because essentially what we're saying is the director truck is always the new truck and then, and it goes down from there and that's somewhat hierarchical. In addition, whenever you have, I've realized now borrowing a truck isn't the same as borrowing Kerry McKay's eight-foot truck because sometimes my SUV or our family's SUV, when you put that backseat down, can carry just as much, if not more than a truck. And it's at a more efficient way. So it's just, I will always have those thoughts. I'm not an expert on the matter, but, but I will, I'll make that comment often because I think even with planning, the initial ask was a truck and we, we may have scaled back to an SUV. And I don't think it's such a bad idea to have not everybody with a truck because you don't always need a truck. And additionally, when you said scheduling, like that, that to me is somewhat convenient. So like, if we're inconvenienced slightly occasionally, great. We don't need to have a truck ready all the time, my opinion only on, on this particular one. I, I don't mind that occasionally somebody doesn't get a truck three to 10 times a year if it's the most efficient use. But I trust operationally, I just, those are, the, the way, I mean, as a kid, our family ran two vehicles and we had five drivers at one point, worked out. I digress. Rentals, I believe you have the next slide here.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this is a highlight since we've been asked on our, what we have rented. And in 2024, we rented four vehicles. Water had the three-quarter ton for the valve trailer to do linear maintenance and that would be what this one-ton purchase would be replacing. To pull the valve trailer, we only need a three-quarter, but in terms of the winter operations side of it, like the one-ton is, it's not even preferred, the one-ton is required. So instead of getting a three-quarter and a one-ton, we thought just a one-ton. And like we said, we, it would follow the, the employee that's full-time but goes Rhodes, Water, Rhodes, Water, Rhodes, Water. We had a half-ton in Parks for summer students. This has been the practice for, forever, I believe. Yep. Infrastructure at the office, we had a half-ton for our summer student and then planning had, had an SUV to supplement their needs. So originally, infrastructure had the SUV, but then planning's pickup broke. So we gave them the SUV and brought in another rental, rental pickup. And what we'd be looking at for 2025 is instead of renting a three-quarter ton, we have this request for Water to purchase the one-ton for Rhodes, Water, shared. Parks would continue to rent for a summer student. Infrastructure, we had some conversations today, we may not need to rent for a summer student. We might be okay, are we keeping the Colorado at the office? Yep, so we're gonna have a Colorado. Are we keeping the Colorado at the office? Yep. So we're gonna have a Colorado at the office, so we can scratch that one right off. And then, uh, through the budget, I believe planning was already approved to purchase their, their SUV. So it would be, um, the, the half-ton really would be the only rental this year, plus two new vehicles.
Thank you. Are there any questions at this point about, um, the planned purchases of twenty twenty-five? Councilor McDonnell?
I think, uh, if there's, looking at this, we're looking at, you, you were saying number three, infrastructure halftime pickup truck scratched for this year? We won't need that?
Correct.
So we're looking at renting, we'll only have one vehicle rented this year if we do. And that would be Ms. Harpers, correct? Okay. So. Again, I don't know. I, I've worked, I worked in an industry where rental pickup trucks made a lot of sense. They ran in a very abrasive, uh, ran, ran in very abrasive materials and, uh, they were driven very hard and, uh, they were sent back and we didn't have to worry about maintenance on them. A pickup truck at the arena that's, you know, carrying whether they're painting lines on the soccer field or what they're up to. Again, I, I need a little more justification to continue to just rent a pickup truck. It's, uh, I, I'd like to see a cost analysis on this, because I, I would say, especially this year, um, our three-quarter ton that was rented for the water department, like, for the rates we saw, we were paying on, on rental vehicles, it's just not efficient. It's, for the amount of work this, the pickup truck was doing, it's, it's hauling the valve trailer, don't get me wrong, but it's, it's not, it's not running all over loaded for bear every day. It's, it's, you know, for what we were paying, we could have probably bought one for, for an annual payment and, and taking care of a lot of maintenance on it. So I'm glad to see getting away from rentals. I don't like renting. We're not a, we're not an operation that should be, I think, in that business. Um, we, we should be able to own them. If there's a need for a halftime pickup truck for the parks, I mean, I'm not saying change all your plans for this year, but I, I would like to see that come to, uh, council for either a purchase and justification, or if there's a, a, a financial reason where we're, we're renting it and it makes more sense to rent it, like let's justify that. Or if there's a place for a purchase to be, is it in the, uh, is it in the rec department from end of April to, uh, to, uh, September first and then it goes over to the roads? Or is there a need elsewhere? Or what, what do we really need? Or how can we, uh, take a holistic view with this? Because, um, I, I don't like renting pickup trucks unless it really makes sense. But in my experience, you tend to pay more for it. Somebody's, somebody owns it and they're making money on it. So that's, uh, that's just one thing I'd like to see personally.
Okay. I see Councilor Jaworski. And on that point, then perhaps like, I guess, like, start with a slight info report, because there, there might be seasonality, right? Like if it's four months and it makes sense, but, yeah. But, but there, if you, if you don't mind providing, uh, something just to, as to the reason, because I, I think Councilor McDonnell said the same thing as Deputy Mayor Lang, is somebody's making financing on it. So, uh, Councilor Jaworski?
Thank you. Through you, Mayor McDonald. Um, just a couple of comments. Um, now that we've been through a few of these, uh, I think that there's a lot of value, like township-wide, there's a lot of value to have like interoperability of vehicles and that, you know, this truck, this style of truck can work very well in roads or water or parks. But I feel like with that, you sort of have to define, you know, you got your one tons, which are for carrying things, pulling things. And then you got your half tons, which are more about carrying people and small equipment. And then you have the other vehicles that are more for moving people around and, you know, want maybe like a toolbox kind of level of work. But in that middle bucket, I think it is important that they're, they're similar, so that it's easy enough for folks to move them when, you know, there's seasonal needs between them, so that, you know, there's not an issue of, well, we can't take that one, you have to use this one. It all becomes very specific. Um, the other thing is I'm very interested in seeing like, um, a financial analysis of the, the rental versus purchasing, because my memory is fading a bit on, um, I know there's been times when we've received like, um, quotes on trucks and the municipal discount that is provided is very attractive, but that hasn't been, I guess, for some time. But that'd be interesting to see, like, how much of a savings is there if it, you know, a truck versus an SUV versus a car, because there's a perception, you know, that what the retail value is or the retail cost is not always the same as what the municipal, um, sector can, uh, take advantage of. So I think that's important. And, but lastly, like in terms of the seasonality, if something's really just a, a, it's like for a seasonal surge, um, need, I would tend to go towards a, a rental. But again, I think it, you know, there's a more fulsome, like, financial discussion to be had. Thanks.
All right. Thank you. Were you adjusting your glasses or Deputy Mayor? Okay, good. Didn't want to miss you. Caught you there, good on that. All right. Seems like those questions, uh, then we'll, the, to the, I guess, that this is the asset management planning, kind of that level. Um, I do trust that from the GMs to the CO level, that we would have that comprehensive fleet at some point, you know, um, you can share toys, so to speak. I don't mean to be dismissive with that, but, uh, it is, it is a fair point. So the asset management plan, there's a slide that says does not include fire. And then we move to our levels of service?
Yep. So just, this does not include the fire fleet. It's everything in this presentation, but, but the fire fleet. So this is our replacement level of service. We have our grader, our backhoe, our tractor, our tracto, tractor includes light equipment, so our Zamboni and our, our trackless as well. Tandems are heavy pick, pickup and our light pickup. The light pickup would include all of our light duty vehicles, so SUVs also. And it has our current level of service. So what we've, what we've been showing in our, our tables in the asset management plan for replacement, how many, how many years between replacing versus our desired or proposed level of service for council's consideration, where we've tried to align with industry standards and make it a bit more performance-based. So we've included not just the number of years, but the kilometers. Uh, like, like when I talked about the tandems, if they run half a year and just winter operations only, we're fifteen thousand kilometers. And if we, the ones that were, um, fit up to be a water truck, you kind of get more to the twenty-five thousand kilometers. So if it's a, depending on how much we're actually using it, we can dispose of vehicles earlier or keep them longer if, if they're single usage. So the, the big changes really on this one are on the pickup side of things. Um, this, again, it seems quite shocking to go from fifteen years for a pickup, heavy pickup, down to eight. But at that two hundred and twenty-five thousand kilometers, that, that is a reasonable time. And we've talked to some of our neighbors who actually use six years, but, and kind of chastise us for coming in at eight and ten. But we at this table did feel like these were very reasonable numbers. And after about two hundred and twenty-five thousand, this truck will still be in good shape, but we'll start to incur more maintenance costs. So we tried to provide council with something that wasn't, you know, the gold standard, but certainly reasonable for what we do and would let us, let the municipality dispose of vehicles before they became a, a liability. So if there's any questions on this, and again, this, we have these tables on your, uh, I'll just, on your seats, and it's, shows the difference in the replacement schedule between the current and the desired level of service. So the current has highlighted blue and the desired or proposed is highlighted in, um, in pink. And it, it's really up for discussion. It's, we can balance things around. We haven't balanced them entirely. It does include the proposed equipment, just so council can see what that might look like. But this is kind of the, um, what, what it would look like in practice. I'm just gonna flip to the next slide. At our current level of service, again, not fire fleet, if we were putting away money every year to kind of manage the fleet, it'd be, uh, four hundred thousand dollars a year at the current level and then five hundred at the desired or proposed. So it'd be an increase of about a hundred thousand dollars a year to keep our fleet in this shape at the capital cost, but we would see our maintenance costs drop, because once you get to a certain point, you're really throwing money at, at things. So, thank you.
And just to check, we have current level of service that would be desired, but not funded, right? Like we, I don't believe we fund four hundred thousand dollars to our fleet reserve. Do you know what that number would be? I'm sorry to put you on the spot in that asset earlier.
It's okay. Through you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I, I honestly don't recall, and this isn't split out by department either, and nor, and it includes water, which would be separately funded. So that is something I would like to come back with a little bit more of an analysis on, once we have your thoughts on the, um, kind of the, the targets that we might be hitting.
Okay. No, that's fair. Councilor Jaworski?
Thank you. Through you, Mayor McDonald. Um, quick question on the slide there that's up. Um, so is the, you said like historically, we, we, um, keep things quite long and then we don't, we, we keep them around as spares, because we know that we're not going to get anything on the most secondary market. But, um, in this case, these levels of service is the hope that at those, you know, years or kilometers, the hope, the plan is that we would get some value out of them when we sell them? Or is it purely a saving on kind of a maintenance approach to have those levels of service?
So, yeah, that's a good question. Um, through you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, it's a bit of both. Um, so you're, you're, you're keeping a little bit of value for those trucks. We tend to, after a truck's been, I mean, through municipal, it's, they get worked. So the last batch, we didn't get a whole lot of money for. So, uh, if we keep the maintenance, if we replace them a little sooner, we might get, you know, a few more bucks for them, so they're actually worth disposing of. Or, uh, if we choose to keep them as spares, it's, it's, it's a bit of both.
And just on, on that, I know that we, we use a different liquidation service, so perhaps an info report on, on how that went might be, be good for council, because there was some discussion around that, moving from gov deals. Um, no, no big urgency on that one. But coming back to the specific question on desired level of service, right here in front of us, is there any, uh, hard opposition to it? I mean, obviously, if we're, we're likely funding below current levels of service, so we, we're funding below desired level of service as well. And if we look towards that, um, purchasing, there were, there was something on there for about fifty thousand dollars a, a year. Um, but I, I think that would be offset by at least. So I'm, that doesn't impact that any way. Um, so to say, does anybody have any qualms with moving towards a service level? Or would you like to see more? Uh, as you see, it does increase the, the desired cost by about a hundred thousand dollars a year per fleet. Councilor Jaworski?
Thank you, through you, Mayor McDonald. Um, I don't have a major issue. I just wanted to point out, like specifically for like the grader. I know that that's one that's always been coming up since, you know, from my term of council and does really seem like that's a great example of ones that we hang on for too long before I'm getting them, uh, getting a, a replacement one. So I think that's a good example, that in certain cases, we definitely need to have a, use them for, uh, limit what we consider their useful life, because they do end up costing us quite a bit too much at the end.
And I would hope that if it gets to twenty years, for example, is an absolute stud of a machine, that, that we would keep it. Like, it is a kind of, it's your check-in moment to, to, so, so to speak. So I, I, I trust that we have, um, that rural mentality here, that it's good, it's good. Councilor McDonnell?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I guess I, I take a more general look at things, um, you know, example, tractors, I mean, ten, uh, ten years, six thousand hours, you're, you're getting up there in hours, but there's generally a lot of life left in them. But sometimes you get a bad machine and it, don't, don't push it to six years if you start, or ten years, if you, uh, start having problems on year seven and it's got three thousand hours and it's got some major issue with the fuel, whatever, a fuel injection system or, uh, def system or, or whatever the case may be, pedal it before it starts costing you major money. But, um, I do wonder too, if, um, I think there's one person in this room who's ever looked at gov deals to make a purchase, maybe two. Um, and you're not looking for trucks and equipment. So I'm wondering if maybe part of the reason too, we weren't seeing any residual value, on top of the fact that we were running our trucks right to the brink. And, uh, you know, we look at the one we're going to dispose of this evening. It's, uh, you know, it's a, for seventeen-year-old truck or whatever the case may be here, uh, eighteen-year-old truck. And, uh, it's not an ideal one to be selling. But are we gonna maybe see more coming out of that, running it through a regular auction service than we would have putting it through gov deals? Because I just don't think there's that many buyers there, whereas, uh, you know, even one of our local auction services would probably bring it back in. And there's, there's obviously a very limited clientele buying, uh, a used snowplow over buying a tractor or a backhoe or, and, and same with the grader. There's, there's not many people running graders around and most of them are running them on a lease or on a, on a servicing, uh, servicing agreement. So it, they're not looking for a twenty-five-year-old grader. There's very few people looking for a twenty-five-year-old grader. That's why they're normally cheap. So I guess they're, look at it in, in a reasonable way, that there is a buyer for a tractor with five thousand hours or six thousand hours. And, uh, if you're pushing eight, maybe think of getting rid of it, but, um, ahead of the, the years. But, yeah, there's, if, if something's working fine and it's just getting older, maybe we keep it. But there's, there's things that'll have a residual value and things that just will never have a residual value at the end of our use. So I have no problem pushing our graders longer, so long as they're working. But, uh, yeah, ma- as was stated, maybe twenty years is your check-in period and twenty-five is the, uh, you know, maybe it's the replacement time if it's not still working properly.
Councilor Jaworski?
No, I would just add, like, so the whole point of this, right, is asset management, to be putting money aside, assuming like this is kind of the targets are. And then if we end up getting to that point, like, oh, look, it's gonna last longer than, I mean, it's not bonus, but I mean, for lack of a better word, that means that, you know, perhaps we can adjust down that, you know, overall, what we have to put into the, you know, the, the reserve, you know, for the future years. But, yeah. I mean, I assume staff always has that in their mind about doing that check-in.
So, so I suppose this will really be reflected in the twenty twenty-six budget and we'll have to have a discussion there that, so, so put the desired level of service perhaps into the budget. Um, it's likely considerably lower or higher than what we're presently doing. And I imagine we, we will likely move that downward pressure, because we will get there in time. But, or perhaps take the more market approach and say, here's where we are, here's where we want to be. And we'll get there over five years, because then it's a little bit more palatable for, one, the taxpayer and then council to, to, um, get that level of service. So I, I suppose we'll ultimately see this in, in budget twenty twenty-six in some way. Uh, but at present, our council's not opposed to, to, to that desired level of service. It will, and I guess the tire hits the pavement when the budget numbers come in front of you as a whole. And then you have ad hoc fleet policies?
I sure do. I'll just make a note on how administration is taking into consideration the performance or the life cycle of things. When we look, for example, at our landfill packer, our landfill has a limited lifespan, so it's not to our benefit to buy a new landfill packer, because we know we have an expiration date. So when we're looking at, you know, over the years, we want to get as many years out of it as possible and either buy a really used beater-up one at the end to get through the last five years, or, or at least over the last five years, like stuff like that. Like, how long are we reasonably going to use it? Definitely comes into consideration. So the last bit is just our ad hoc fleet policies. Administratively, we're not keen to put these into like a, a formal policy, but if council wishes, we can. Um, thought, people have asked, like, who takes trucks home? So very plainly, uh, the fire chief, the supervisor of roads and fleet, the roads lead hand, the director of water wastewater, and the water operator. So it rotates depending on who's on call, so they can respond to things after hours. And on occasion, municipal vehicles will be taken home to assist with like road patrol. So if people are away or if we see like a storm coming in or, or whatever, uh, to reduce the morning commute for off-site training. So if somebody is going to train, lives in Maxville and is going to training in Alexandria, it doesn't make sense to come down and come back up. They'll just leave their personal vehicle at, at our site and do that, or just assist with the response to a planned or anticipated after-hours event. So that's kind of the same as assisting with, uh, it's kind of like, you're, you're on call, you know you're gonna be on call. We send it home with you, but it's not a normal thing. So I, this was more really for, uh, council to have a look at what we do. And if you desire us to put it in writing, we can. Or if you're happy with how we've been administratively managing this, then we're happy to continue.
Does anybody have any strong feelings? I think if you don't have strong feelings, you might as well maintain status quo. Okay. And that then draws the end of the presentation. I, I did want to, to thank everyone, uh, who came up today, because this is good work and Councilor McDonnell for, um, for bringing it to the attention during budget, because I think these conversations are good. And you look through these lists, like replaced still in service, having the conversation, so that we're aware. Um, had a summary here, but, uh, you know, I, I am thankful to the crews, because one, one thing that, uh, whenever snowplows or grading comes up, sometimes I get calls and then I say, I'll run it to administration, trying to stay in, in my lane. And oftentimes, people are like, well, thank you for calling the, uh, the grader to me, but the grader was just, just on its way. So I get a lot of, uh, people think it's me, but it's really just, we're, we're pretty, we're pretty on, on the point from our crews for both, uh, snowplowing. I think there was two or three this, this winter that somebody called me, said it's not there. And then fifteen minutes, they called me and said, thanks for sending it. And I had nothing to do with that. And I can't take credit for those things. That's, that's all on, on, on the crews that, that we employ. So, and, and that also, uh, does with all our services, not just those up here. So thank you very much for that. And I will then move the meeting to an end. We will start our council meeting, uh, about five minutes late. Uh, but I will make adjournment unless there's any other further comments. All right. Moved by Councilor Jaworski, seconded by Councilor Bougie. Be resolved that the committee of the whole of the township of South Langaria adjourned at the call of the chair at six twenty-six PM. All those in favor? Garry. Thank you very much.